Offset, let's bring this meeting to order. It is 4:32. Okay, as I said earlier, Secretary's report. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, none? Treasurer's report. How are we doing on Treasurer's report, Dave?
It's come together. I set out the updated budget shortly before the meeting. If that's not what you're looking for, then I'm gonna have to play different.
I didn't see that, but I did get your Librarian's report. I saw that. I didn't-
Okay, yeah, let me resend that.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw the budget. You sent the budget, right, Dave?
Yeah, just maybe about 10 minutes before we started, or maybe-
Yeah, yeah, I did get it.
Oh, today? Oh, okay. All right, I didn't check.
We're looking good.
If I have it-
Yeah, I thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah, really, me too.
I mean, my only point of concern, which I've been told isn't that big a deal, is that the electric is getting low funding in the electric. And the heating oil is getting a little bit low, but nothing to worry about, because we had to fill the tank a couple of weeks ago, which was an expense we weren't necessarily anticipating.
Right.
Right.
I didn't receive it, but that's okay. You can send it to me later.
Okay, yeah, definitely. Sorry, Colleen.
That's okay. Has anybody heard about when they're gonna start doing budgets for '23, or any dates on our times on that where we have to submit?
I saw some guidance come out the other day about budgets. Let me look to see if there was a deadline on it.
Okay.
My budget guidance was issued on the 5th.
Yeah, we have the guidance, but I don't see a deadline.
Yeah, I don't see a date in there.
All right. So we need to set up a date so we can start working on this.
Okay.
Somehow I'm recording this. I have no idea why.
It's being recorded to livestream.
Okay, also, all right.
Hi, Gail.
Hi.
Hi, Gail.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I tried to get on my computer, but I couldn't, so I'm a little bit late.
Are you on your phone?
On my phone, but I don't see the whole group.
Colleen, do you have a date for the- No. No, I was looking, what's good for everybody? For anybody? Monday? Because Monday's a holiday.
Yep.
And we got Tuesday or Wednesday. Wednesday, I have a meeting at 6:00.
I'm free catch-up next week at work, so I'm not available Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Okay, do you want to do it the following week?
What's this for?
Budget.
Oh, budget, okay.
Budget for next year.
I can do Monday, the 24th.
I'm in Florida, then.
Oh, nice.
So-
Anybody else? Monday, the 24th?
I'm open.
Me. You're on- Dave, you're on-
I have a planning board meeting at 6:30.
Okay.
I'm available.
I can't do 25, 26, 27. Classes are starting, and I've got classes those three days this week, that week, I'm sorry.
What about a Saturday morning?
I could do Saturday morning.
Which Saturday are you looking at, Pam?
Many of them.
I think-
Not this one. Not this Saturday, but after that. No, no.
Okay. All right, I could do the 22nd or the 29th.
How about the 29th? Thank you for the 29th. Loud.
Who's got, oh, my TV, sorry. You know how us old people are. Is that better?
Yep. But, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so we'll put the 29th down. What time? You want to say for 10?
Good for me.
Yep, okay. You're at the library anyway, so, okay.
Actually, flying back that day, so I won't be here either.
Okay, all right. So we'll get that. Anything for correspondence?
No.
No? Nobody?
Nothing.
Okay.
Has anyone heard from Evelyn? Has anyone heard from Evelyn over the holidays, or?
She did call me. She's doing well. She was going to Rosemary's for Christmas. I think she was staying a couple of days, and that was about it.
Yeah, I saw- she called me also. Yeah, she sounded great. She's just amazing, amazing. I want her jeans.
I know.
Jeans. Was it mentioned?
Okay, all right. Go ahead, go ahead, Lynn.
Mentioned at all to her about the bench, or?
No.
I didn't. No, I didn't either.
No.
Okay. You want to surprise her, right? Are we gonna surprise her, or?
I'd like to-
I think we should tell her, Rosemary, and after, you know, I was gonna say after the holidays. It is after the holidays. But I mean, maybe shortly, so she could think about times that she could bring Evelyn back here for something.
And then we have to think about what we want that little plaque to say on the bench itself, or inside, or whatever.
Right. Yes, I still have the plaques.
All right, so we need to do that. We need to think about that. But does anybody have Rosemary's phone number? I don't.
I know. Are you anybody's friend? I'm Kathy's friend on Facebook, maybe Rosemary's, so.
I'm Rosemary's friend. I could probably do-
You could send, yeah, you could send a message that way.
Okay, I could. Okay, all right. I'll do that.
Okay.
All right. Librarian's report. All yours, Dave.
All right, Librarian's report. And you guys feel free to let me know if I'm doing this too granular, or some of this stuff doesn't need to be brought up. Paul Valette was in last week. He replaced the vanity, the sink, the toilet, the oily ceiling tiles that were in there, and he told me he vacuumed the rug.
Oh, my gosh, I can't wait to see it.
It looks great.
Nice.
Looks great.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Yep.
Looks great.
Yeah, no, everything looks really good. He submitted his invoice, which was $15.50. I forwarded that to Peter at Town Hall, because it wasn't-
$15.50 for what?
The work that he completed so far.
The bathroom? Oh, I'm taking $15,000, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, God, no. I would have reached out sooner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I submitted it to Peter at Town Hall, because I wasn't sure how to process it, because I'm not sure where the capital funding is.
Right.
But he said he had, as Peter replied, that he had given it to Tara, who I don't know. So I'm hoping that that's the right direction for that to go.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, that's my assumption as well, but.
Right.
I wanted to update everybody on the two programs that we had, excuse me, the two programs that we had in December on the 15th. We know we only had two children signed up for the ornament making with Anna. Over a dozen showed up, and they, some people stayed the whole entire time.
Oh, my goodness.
It was great, but at the same time, you know, we weren't necessarily prepared for that. Anna kind of felt like they were using her as a babysitter, because the parents were hands-off, which means the kids were doing whatever they wanted to do. They were making multiple ornaments. Nobody registered. So we're gonna, I'm thinking that going forward, I know you can't require registration, because I don't want to turn people away at the door because they didn't give a name ahead of time. But I want to be able to be prepared for that, or, you know, somehow encourage people to sign up ahead of time, because-
True, true.
You don't want, you don't want to buy a million supplies and need-
Right. We couldn't say strongly urge so that we have enough supplies, or?
Yep, and it could say that supplies will be limited to registrants, or-
Is registering advanced, or?
Yeah, something along those lines.
Right.
Yeah, she did talk to me about it a long time, actually, too. I think one thing is that sometimes people that present, they do have a pretty strict number they want to adhere to. And I think she did want to adhere to 10 people, and we thought we'd be fine, because we had two people signed up.
Right.
So that was one of her gripes, you know, holding to that number of 10 people if that's who she can do. The other thing was that she felt like the parents just dumped the kids on her, and they were just talking and having a great time. And she thought, so, you know, this was her perception, that the parents were gonna be helping their children. You know, they were gonna be working with the children, helping the children, because she felt like she had, like, whatever, 15 children or whatever. And it was just way too much to try to, you know, help them when the parents weren't really paying attention. So I don't know, maybe be just, you know, adhering on the form, just making it clear to people that, you know, if there is a number we have to adhere to, that that's the cutoff. They can't go beyond that. And, yeah, just emphasizing again that you do need to register beforehand.
Yeah.
It really varies with presenters, so I think it really depends on the presenter, the flexibility that we're given, really. But, you know, it was great for us that we found out that people were really interested, you know, in the children's program, and so many people came.
And that was the, that was the one that I think we had originally published the wrong date, or something like that, too, which might have contributed to some of the confusion that we had at that particular event. I think it was a perfect storm.
Right. But I think it showed, getting that number, I think it did show, Pam, like, I think you had contacted the schools, and that definitely, definitely helped, you know, I mean-
Yeah, clearly made a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the parents' defense, if I was, if I saw something that was a craft for kids, I probably would go in the other room, too. I mean, just say to help, or-
What we could do is get the junior friends to come to those events in the future to help.
Exactly. I was thinking that, too, that we just, we just need to have a couple helpers there, you know, if they need extra help.
Sure.
Well, they couldn't go in the other room, because there was another program going on, because we were doing our re- the rooms, so.
Oh, so.
Right. Double duty that night.
Right. But anyway, overall, it was kind of a success for us.
Okay, what's next, Dave?
Let's see. Received a check from the town of Millville for $800, referencing two invoices. I don't know, I have no problem depositing it. I just don't know what these are in relation to. I emailed, I wrote, sent a note to Marsha at the Town Hall, asking her to just let me know what it is, or if it needs to be allocated to a certain- I had a note that an invoice has been paid, but I don't know what they are.
Is that from the Arts Council, or no?
Not that I'm aware. It didn't reference anything. The only references were invoice 33166 and 40518, with two separate dollar amounts.
I have no idea what that indicates at all, because I don't use those reference numbers, number one. I mean, I know, I know that other numbers are listed for Baker and Taylor. It doesn't have anything to do with them, and it, I have no idea what it might, what it might be.
It was just four numbers?
Yeah, it was two invoice numbers and two separate dollar amounts.
Yeah, but the invoice numbers, were they four digits?
Uh, five.
Five?
Yeah.
Kind of sounds like the Cultural Council referencing the grant award.
Oh, maybe. It'd be nice if it said that.
I did submit for reimbursement for cultural council grants, so it could be that it was that. That's-
And I submitted, too, and mine was a $4.25, I think, or $4.50. I can't remember now.
Oh, so that could be one of yours, but what was the $3.75?
It might have been one that I submitted. I think I submitted three or four for reimbursement.
Okay.
That the zoo, the $3.75?
It might be the zoo, or it might be, remember, we had the program in May with Diane Edgecombe.
Right.
We had the zoo program. There, I think, three or four. The folder's in my car, but I'm glad you brought up the Cultural Council, because did they note, did Ron notify you if we got the grants this year?
For this year, I was just checking in on that. It sounds, we thought the grant awards had gone out, but it sounds like there was some kind of a hangup, so they should, they should be going out shortly.
Well, will they be emailing us, Pam, or will they be notifying via our box in the Town Hall?
I believe an email goes out to whoever submitted the application for the grant. So it'll go to, if you submitted it with librarian@millvillemay.org, it will go to that email address.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I know that one was for February that I requested for the zoo, and it was, you know, like, how to take care of your pet. I think we were looking at February break.
Okay.
So I don't know if he's, I haven't looked at the email lately, just because, you know, I was under the weather, but I don't know if you've seen any, Dave, at all.
I have not noticed anything like that. Just a lot of traffic, you know, CWMR's traffic, and-
Yeah, right, right.
So my concern is if that's my reimbursement, that $425, if that's my reimbursement, I need, we need to somehow get that back into our petty cash, right?
Yeah.
Because that's where I took that from. How, okay, I guess, and that's weird, because in years past, it's been sent to me. I mean, I had to give my social security number, you know? I think I did it wrong every time, because-
You, did you, when you submitted the grant this year, did you do it in your name or in the library?
In my, in the library's name this year, but in years past, this year passed, this $4.25, I did it in my name, and it-
But that's why it went to the library, because it wasn't in your name?
No, 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 listen to what I'm saying.
It was in her name.
It was. And it's always in the past. It's always been sent here, and I cash it and give it right back to the petty cash.
Right.
Going forward, I did it in the library name, but this past year, it was in my name. I submitted for reimbursement in my name, I believe. But, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. It's just that, if that is the money, then that needs to go into petty cash.
Right, right.
Do you keep a record of what you submitted? Otherwise, we could reach out to Ron and just get a copy of whatever you submitted, so that we can match it up.
Do I have, do I have copies of what I submitted? Yeah, I have copies of what I submitted.
Okay, so we should be able to figure it out, then. It could be that you submitted, too, and that Lynn's still got a check coming in the mail.
Okay, okay, good, good, okay.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, we're now on automatic delivery through Peterson Oil. They filled the tank late, late December, and then came back at the beginning of January, so we seem to be on the schedule.
Yeah.
Oh, good, good.
Delivered very short tank of oil on January 3rd, after they came December 21st. But that's good. We'll never, won't have to worry about running out of oil again.
Good.
Good.
And we did have a couple of statements from patrons asking if we could be open earlier during the week. You know, I'm okay with doing that, but I'm hesitant to change the hours again so soon after changing them already. I think it just might cause more confusion. But I'll leave it to the trustees' opinion on, you know, if we want to have Meg come in at 2 o'clock one day.
We did have some real regulars on Tuesday at 2 o'clock. Anna would always come in. Michelle Till came in a lot. In fact, she called me-
From the parking lot?
At home, on my cell, when the library wasn't open, you know, Tuesday at 2, and she wanted to know about that, and, so there might, you know, it could be that with the retired people, they really like the earlier hours. I saw somebody had mentioned that a lot of retired people don't like to drive at night, which I understand, having had eye problems myself, that I had to get fixed and things like that.
I believe that was also Michelle.
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe if Meg is willing to work the 2 o'clock, you know, maybe you might want to think about that. It's up to you.
Yeah, no, like I said, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Want to have the regular patrons not be affected by the changes that have happened at the library. So let me work out the best day for Meg to come in for 2, and then we'll just change the sign.
And we'll be open more hours, which would be good, right?
Yeah, but can we afford that?
Well, she won't stay all day. I mean, she'll, I'll have her still work the hours, the amount of hours that she's working now.
Oh, cool, okay.
And I'll, yeah, can't be, I will close it, I suppose, because Christine doesn't want to be there alone, I don't think, and I'm okay with that. But we'll make it work.
Okay. Well, we can, when we sit down and look at the budget, too, you know, when we're doing the budget, and kind of figure it out, if we can add the extra.
This is my fault, but are the hours 4 to 8, Monday through Wednesday? Is that what we're open right now, 4 to 8?
4 to 7 on Monday, 4 to 7 on Tuesday, 4 to 8 on Wednesday, although I'm starting to think that that 7 to 8 is the graveyard, because we haven't had a person in that late, but it's new, and people don't know, and Saturday is still 10 to 3.
Okay.
Wednesday open till 8 isn't new, but we've been open 6 to 8 on Wednesday, so maybe that's where we can adjust if we can't add hours yet.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Just keep it to 7, and yeah, maybe put an extra hour on, instead of saying 2, open at 3, you know, I don't know.
Or do like 4 to 7, 2 to 5, 4 to 7, or whatever it is. I'm not doing math in my head right now, but something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, keep the number of hours pretty much the same, just kind of reschedule it so that the sun's out for a little while while we're there.
Yeah, yeah. And I think there is money, plenty of money in administrative salaries for Meg to work a few hours like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. As I know, the minimum, the base pay went up to 1425 on January 1st. I don't know if that was taken into account when the budget was created last year, but I don't, I don't think a couple of extra hours-
No, it actually wasn't. That's a good point. I forgot that, that that went up.
Well, I mean-
I guess we're never quite sure if it's gonna pass when you're doing the budget for the following year, so.
Yep. I mean, it wasn't a giant leap, you know, it was about 50 cents, but still, it adds up.
Yeah, and well served.
Yeah, that's, those are my Librarian's report for the week, for the month, actually.
I have, I have a question. How was Santa's visit?
Oh, it was, it was good. Santa had to send in a replacement Santa last minute. The original Santa, and I'm blanking on names, I'm sorry, came in to let me know that his brother-in-law was going to fill Santa's boots for the session. He only stayed for an hour. And then we had, which I didn't realize, it was only going to be an hour, so we had some children come in after Santa had left.
Oh.
But my daughter Ivy was with me, and she led them through some crafts. Did some Christmas crafts.
Put on the Santa costume first.
Swimming in it, yeah. But I mean-
She was one of Santa's elves.
Right. Yep, so, I mean, it wasn't perfect, but nobody was left sad, so everybody left with something.
Good.
Did the lady come with her dog to get the picture with Santa outside? There's a lady that had emailed us to-
Yeah.
And her dog outside?
If she did, she came when we weren't there.
Oh, okay.
No. That would have been fun. Yeah, so altogether, I think maybe six kids came altogether. I have, I have the photos from Sharon, and I didn't put them on the Facebook page, which is my bad, and maybe we'll get them up there just as a recap of what had happened.
I think Sharon shared them. I saw them.
Okay, great. Well, and I'm trying to convince one of my kids to be the Easter Bunny.
Colby was the Easter Bunny last year, I think.
Year before.
Has the Health Department been in touch at all about COVID or anything, or?
Oh, yeah, did you pick up more COVID tests?
I have not. I didn't know there were any available at this-
Yeah, they were out of them.
They're out of them. It's on the website now. I guess, I think I saw a conversation. I thought Alyssa was picking them up, but-
But I think they were out.
Oh, they were out by the time you went.
Yeah, they were out. But I think they had them at the senior center, and a couple other places around town, yeah.
Alyssa, you look great on camera.
That's very kind.
I know, I've kind of got a better background. I don't like my background.
Okay, the other thing is, and Colleen, you probably could talk to Dave about this, but our annual report that we have to submit for the Town Book?
Yeah, I saw that. So there's lots of copies in the back, in the file cabinet. I have to bring some drinks in Saturday. Anyway, I'll stop by, because I'll be out of quarantine by then. So I have these drinks and some snacks that were bought for the summer program with the ALA grant that we just have not used. We have all that money that there was nothing to spend it on. So I will, I'll drop those, you know, drop those off, and then, yeah, whatever, whatever you want to talk about, we can talk about.
Okay, great. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
But I can show you where some of those past reports are. It's really just a summary of the past year.
Okay.
The full year, January to December, 2021 is what it would be, and just kind of a summary of, you know, what we did, how we serve the town. I would throw in some data points, you know, about the number of patrons we have who are cardholders, the amount of circulations we have, things like that.
Okay.
And the number of programs, the programs that we're running, things like that.
Okay. I mean, if there's a framework to look at, and the data's out there, we can always put a report together, but I'd love to talk to you about it.
Yeah, and she has, she usually sends a form for it. I don't know if she sent a form, a word form, so she's a little bit picky about the margins and things like that.
Okay.
But she usually designates that in the email that she sends out about it, so.
Okay. Who would that come from?
That comes from Sherry. Her name is Sherry. She's someone that sits at the desk when you walk in Town Hall. That's Sherry. And Sherry's kind of a master of all trades, like she, she seems to be the central administrator there. And she also heads up all the Health Department meetings and lets you know about the Health Department meetings, so she's kind of involved with the Health Department. So I think she just gets paid to do a number of different things at Town Hall.
The other thing, go ahead, Dave.
I'm saying, I don't, I don't see anything from her in the inbox, so.
Okay. It'll probably be coming very soon. Usually, we have to have it in by, I think, February or end of February, I think, I'm not-
Yeah, yeah, I think it might be early February or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that, before Colleen left, she talked about having a five-year plan and doing a workshop on it. I think we should work on the budget first, and then work on the five-year plan after that, get the budget done, and, you know, make sure we're all set on that before we start grinding in the five-year plan. I know- Grinding in the five-year plan. I know that has to be done, so.
Okay.
Does anybody have any comments on that?
I agree.
Now, I know there are two central people at MBLC that head up all of that and one is Rob Favini. Um, the other one is a woman. I can't remember her name, but. They are the people that control the LSTA grants and the whole. Reason aside from helping us to plan, to put together that five-year plan is to be, have a placement where we can actually apply for. LSTA grants.
Right.
Um, so that's the whole purpose behind the long-range plan, the five-year plan. And, um, the people to go to for guidance are really at the MBLC.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anybody else, anything else under librarian's report before we go on?
Not that I have.
No, okay. Okay. First thing under building concerns, septic. I know everybody says it's a pain, but I ask it anyways. How are we doing? Okay?
I, I have encountered no issues.
No problem.
I did flush the toilet once last week. It was fine.
One of the old one.
Then, the new one, I think. I just went in to flush it just to see.
Um, I know, Dave, you had contact, made some contacts about the rug cleaning.
Yes. Um, I have not received a response to my second inquiry to schedule it. Um, I will follow up with them either tomorrow or Saturday.
All right, great.
Uh, I wondered too if Wanda, has Wanda been into clean at all?
Yes, she was in last week, um, for about an hour and a half.
Oh, good. Okay.
I didn't see her, but I got her note.
Okay, great. Yeah, just, yeah, just, I always have to remind myself. I always had to remind myself to make sure she gets paid, so. She usually writes it on the calendar too. We won't forget to pay her, but.
And she left a note as well.
Oh, yeah, she's very nice.
Okay. Thinking about the rug. Can we maybe, um, somehow get a new vacuum? Ours is absolutely awful. We used it, Colleen and I were trying to use it after our Pinterest party, which, you know, we made a mess. From Pinterest and I think that vacuum is just awful.
What, what does Wanda use? Does she bring her own or?
She, a lot of times she uses that carpet scraper thing, kind of, you know, the thing you. Do you know what that is?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a lightweight kind of, but I've seen her using that. Um, I have used the vacuum several times. It is. Big and heavy and unwieldy.
Right.
Not easy to use. We do have the smaller vacuum underneath the circulation desk, but I think the battery needs to be replaced on that. That's a really good vacuum, but, um. Yeah, the, the, the bigger one is not easy to use. I mean.
It doesn't do a job.
Is the smaller one, one of those sharks? Did we get one, a really good one?
No, it's not a shark. It's better than a shark. It's, um, what is it?
Oh, yeah, the next one, uh, right. So maybe just a new battery there with that.
Um, um. The, maybe the friends could buy a vacuum.
That'd be great.
Oh, sure.
Could be a good, yeah. Or at least the battery for the other one.
Yeah. Uh, what kind of battery? Like, do you just order a battery online or is it like normal, like double A batteries or something?
We have a Dyson under the circulation.
Oh, yeah.
The small Dyson. You know, those are really powerful. We don't have the seven. I think we have the six. Um, and it's really not, um. I don't think it came with the long stick and it's not really appropriate for, you know, like big swaths. It's more for picking up smaller areas and. It's really, really, really good at that, yeah. I mean, the bigger one, the bigger vacuum is made to do a carpet, to do a big carpet.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it doesn't do a very good job.
No, I think it's very old. I don't know how long it's been there, certainly longer than me, than I was there.
If at all possible, if the friends maybe could think about, you know, the battery for the smaller one, but then a really good. Almost like a shop vac or something, something a little bit more heavy duty.
Shop vac would be good.
Maybe, yeah, something. I know it's kind of big and bulky though, and we don't have a lot of space to, to store things, but. Something just with more, um, I don't know, more power. I mean, unfortunately, we kind of make a mess during Pinterest.
Yeah, we do.
And different projects like that and, um, I don't know.
A, a shop vac has its uses, but I don't think, like, if you're talking like one of those barrel kind of shop vacs that.
Right.
I don't think I would want to use that to clean a rug, at least not one the size of the light and space in the library.
The men, their workshops, right?
Yeah, that's, seems to me to be a bigger version of the, what the Dyson does, like we, you know, we clean. This spill or these wood shavings or, or, I don't know, but I think we, we need something more like a hotel vacuum.
Yeah. Any industrial or whatever, right?
See if anybody's selling turkeys. Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Maybe we could do a little bit of research to, to see what fits the, the friend's budget well enough.
Yeah, maybe I'll send you some links at some point.
All right.
Okay, what else? Um, uh, one of the things we have on is painting the outside of the building that was on hold because of COVID. You know, a year ago and then probably still on hold. I don't know if you want to get a hold of the sheriff's department and, um, because they do the painting for us. And to see if they're gonna do it again or it's not, they're not gonna do it.
Yeah, I would almost think with COVID crazy now that they would not be able to give you an answer, right?
Yeah.
And to be fair, they probably wouldn't want to paint until the spring comes.
Right, right. I mean, we could find out if they're going to.
Yeah.
You know?
I can, I probably have in the email, there's probably, um, a couple conversations back and forth with him. His name is Sergeant. Sergeant something. I'm, I've got it. Um, very, very nice.
He's the only sergeant in there.
Um, yeah, he's at Worcester, he's in Worcester and, um. I haven't heard back from him. He did say that he would get back to me. Um, and I, I'm sure that COVID right now, right, has shut it all down, but. Um, so I, I can look and see, um, if I can get his contact information for you. There's also a flyer, a folder. In the hanging folders and back that, um, have the contact information for them.
Oh, I got him right here. Steven Salvartos.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. I know it's a Hispanic name, I think.
Yeah, I'll, you could just follow up, uh, on the last email. Looks like it was from twenty twenty, but can't hurt.
Yeah, just to find out if they, they're doing it. Maybe they're not gonna do that anymore, because, you know, I don't know, you know, so. But it's.
Yeah, we'll find, nope.
Worth checking into. The other thing I had on here, contract to starting work at the library. Well, he did start. Did he say about when he was coming back to finish?
He did not. I think he was.
Yeah, he told me just, you know, in spring. Outside. Right, right. Okay, I didn't know if he gave you a date saying, I'll be back in April or, you know, okay.
Nope, not at the moment.
Okay. All right, old business, uh, bench, bench presentation, so I'm gonna contact Rosemary through Messenger and find out what's going on with her. Um. And, uh, do we want, do we want to pick a time? Do we want to say we want to do it in May? Do we want to do it in April or? So at least give Rosemary an idea what would, would, what's going on.
I would, I would let her pick a time.
Okay.
If, if it's, we have enough advanced notice.
Yeah.
Right? And then. Like a Saturday would be nice, but. During the week, we could do it.
I think Saturday would be good because then if anybody else wanted to come down.
Right, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Uh, I just, I did want to bring up that we do need to finish off that ALA grant. You know, they want, they're gonna want accountability for the money.
Right.
Um, and I, I think we have to have some kind of open house. For, for people, you know, whether you'd want to have that just on a Saturday. Um, and if we could spend some of that money for that, um, then at least we could say. You know, we have this big open house and we, you know, or we want to pay somebody to videotape it.
Could we, could we have an open house and at the same time dedicate the, the bench to Evelyn?
I don't know.
You know.
You, I, I think they're gonna want, supposedly they're gonna want accountability by February sometime.
Oh.
Um, yeah, all right. So, uh, you know, you know, how? Um, how much they'll follow through on that, I don't know, but I know that's what they had talked about. Um. The grant has been finished up, but they, they will want to know how we spent the money. And they kind of just want some conclusion on it, you know, some kind of, um. I guess accountability or productivity or whatever.
Where'd the money go? Yeah, exactly.
Where'd the money go? Right, which, you know, we just didn't need to spend very much for what we wanted to do.
That February, Colleen, is that, uh, does everything need to be completed by then? Or is it if we reached out and said that we have, you know, the final spend of it scheduled and, or, or on the calendar?
Well, you know, maybe one thing that could save us is COVID. Yeah, it's a, you know, e- everything got delayed because COVID, people don't feel comfortable coming in.
Sure.
Um, quite, yeah, and so we had to delay it and then just set a date and tell them when the date's gonna be.
Okay.
And then maybe, maybe outline, if they require it, just outline how you're gonna spend some money for it. Um.
What's the criteria?
We have plenty of money from that to pay somebody to do a nice taping of it. Um, you, you know, we invited people in town administration. We invited the school administrators. And we invited the senior center people. So all those people could be re-invited to come to the open house and give any. Um, remarks or comments they want to make about, you know, the library and. You know, how, how, yeah, anything they want about the library. There should be email. I don't know if there were any, if you saw any emails at all from them.
Offhand, I don't know, but I'll, I'll dig through and see what I come up with.
Okay, okay. And, and even if you did an ALA search, you know, get, that, some of those emails will come up.
Okay.
Hey, uh, junior friends group, how are they doing? How are the girls doing? Have they done anything?
They haven't.
They haven't. They haven't met at all in, since maybe November, I think, with the holidays and everything, the school. Um, I know we had it on the list to do the lobby over again. And we had a, a whole plan for kind of implementing a more regular program with them.
Okay.
Got to follow up with everyone.
All right. The other thing is they kind of helped put up the, um, train set, you know? Um, that was one of my things is, I, do we want to take it down? Do we want to have them take it down? What do we want to do?
We can have them take it down.
Yeah, I agree.
Tim can come and dismantle the, um, or show them even how to take apart the, the actual table itself. And, um, you know, and, and we will store the table if necessary. And, um, whatever you want to do with the set itself. Well, I, I think, aren't the crates going back to Cam? He said he would store them for us.
Yeah, Cam did say that, right.
So we don't have to worry about that, so. So, Tim or Dave, do you want to come up with a date that the kids can, um, be there to take it down and, and Tim can also be there or?
Yeah, let me reach out because we're, we're trying to coordinate the day to do the lobby too, so maybe we can kind of do it all at once and I'll. I'll loop you in when, when we get it settled.
Okay, excellent. Okay, senior friends group, Alyssa.
We haven't met because of the holidays, similar to what. But I, I am gonna send them an email about, I don't, it's hard like with COVID to think of fundraiser ideas that. People will feel comfortable doing, but I was thinking maybe doing, um, you know how other place, other. I think the Blackstone Friends of the Library, they did a fundraiser with a good stuff smokehouse. Where, so I was thinking maybe that could be something we could do. You know, some people feel going out to eat.
Right, or doing takeout too.
Yeah, so I was thinking of maybe getting in contact with them, so I'll keep you guys.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
They seem very community oriented, so you probably have good luck with them.
Yeah, I think so too, so.
All right, new business, um, under, Alyssa, you're up for election this year. You're gonna let us know, are you running again or?
Uh, I don't, I might hold off actually, sadly. Yeah, I don't know. Does everybody else know the news? I don't know if anybody else. Having a baby, I'm doing May.
Oh, my gosh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You could bring the baby to the meeting.
Oh, my God, that's so exciting.
New, new junior friend.
Friend, definitely.
I thought you were gonna say you got some big library job, but, but this is even more exciting than that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited.
She's across the street. I got a new one in the neighborhood.
Don't want to stay on and then if it gets too much, resign, you know?
Well, I think I'm. April, so I'm doing May, so I'm not gonna just like stop in February, I say till May. But I don't want to get, go through like getting all those signatures and then I find out, I, it's too much, you know?
Right.
But I'm sure ma- maybe at like, after the first, probably come back or something.
Right. I mean.
Really exciting, Alyssa. Congratulations.
Do you know what you're having yet?
No, I find out next week. I can't wait to find out.
Oh, how exciting. Oh, my gosh, we're so happy for you.
Thank you.
Unbelievable. So cool.
That's great.
Okay, now, I mean, I'm not taking away from Alyssa, but we have to think of somebody to take out papers. Because they have to be turned in by the fourteenth of February.
You have to find another person?
Yeah.
If you're gonna resign, well, no, as long as you.
But you're not running. If you're not running, we need to fill that spot.
I, I just, I don't know, I, I just feel like the board of selection only has a few people. Why do you need to have a full board?
Would you consider staying on if we got the signatures for you?
We've done that before.
I mean, and not, we certainly will understand, but, you know. Maybe as time goes on, you'd be happy to go out once a month.
That is true too.
Because it's an elected, um, uh, uh, an elected, um, position. We don't have, we don't have that choice of keeping it empty, you know what I mean? Just as.
Oh.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm doing it on purpose. They're just doing it because no one has stepped forward.
What if she doesn't attend?
That's fine. She could skip a meeting here and there.
Just a thought.
Okay. I mean, if you guys are to help me get signatures, that would be nice.
I mean, you, you know, if you're, if there's a couple meetings, we've all missed meetings here and there, so.
Okay.
We'd understand.
Yeah, Zoom setup. We can always zoom you in too.
Oh, that's true.
That's true.
Baby.
Yeah.
So I, I would guess you have to get the papers, but we'll, we could run around and get the signatures, right, Colleen or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Strong-armed back into it.
Decide that it's too much, well, we understand.
Okay. I just didn't want to be like on the board, but not really on the board, you know what I mean? I didn't want to be like, like not pulling, so.
You're right. No, no, no. You be good.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Alyssa, you'll go take out the papers. Soon as you get them out, um, you know, you get a few and then. Give it to me. I'll get some, well, I'll pass it.
I'll get some, so.
Can we just like leave it at the library and have the patrons sign it?
Sure.
I don't think you can.
Oh, no?
No, I don't think so because it is, because it is elected position. I don't think you can do it, leave it at the library.
Okay.
Um, if somebody stood outside in front of the library and said, oh, could you sign these papers? You could do that, but you can't leave them on and say.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
How many signatures do you need?
Think it's twenty or twenty-five, maybe?
I think it's twenty-five.
Right, yeah, it's not too bad.
Alrighty.
We'll take care of you. And we're all experienced, you know, babysitters, so.
All right, um, other matters, anybody have anything on other matters?
Uh, just a reminder to, that, you know, Meg has the contacts for the Girl Scouts, and uh, you know, they did a lot for us. Um, and I, I know that we had talked about them being included when we do
Oh, the bench reveling?
Have the bench ceremony, yes, so Meg, Meg has their contacts. And um, she's kind of the person you could work with to make sure they get notified and are there and invited, you know, to be part of that ceremony when we have it.
Right.
And I also think that, I can't remember the young man's name, but the Eagle Scout who did the the trails behind the elementary school donated the funding that he had left over to the library, and I don't think it'd be a bad idea to invite.
It was like, yeah, it was like fifty dollars.
Yeah, Jacob, maybe, or?
Yeah, I think he was a Blackstone, he was Blackstone, I think, the Blackstone, um.
He was from the Blackstone troop, but I donated cans to the Eagle Scout who was doing it, and he was in Millville up on Chestnut Hill.
Oh, oh, he was, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a troop in Millville anymore, they go into Blackstone.
Okay.
And uh, Colleen, would it make sense to have the Girl Scouts also at the ALA open house?
Um. They, they weren't really involved in that.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
The other thing, Colleen, um, Colleen C., that was on last month's meeting, um, uh, note. I just wanted to bring up again is that Blackstone Library craft class in honor of Jim.
Oh, right, right, yes.
Have you heard any more about that?
No, I hadn't contacted Lisa about that. I'm just kind of, I had, because with COVID, everything's springing up, I don't know if people want to get together. Um, you know, at the library and do it, because she wants, she said she'd be willing to come to the library. I don't know how many people would want to do it on Zoom. When she did it through Blackstone, she did it on Zoom. Um, but, you know, give it another, maybe, I was thinking of either February or March, you know, what makes it quiets down a little bit?
They say that they, somewhere, I read somewhere that they think Madison is near its peak. The number could be going down, but.
It was said today.
Yeah, not till the end of January, they're thinking it's still gonna peak till the end of January.
Or Rhode Island right now is the worst in the nation.
Hmm, yeah.
And while, haha, I'm just kidding.
So, but, so, do, do you want me to contact, I can contact her if we want to do it earlier or?
I say not, you know, February or March would be, that seems okay to me, right?
Yeah. All right, our next meeting is gonna be scheduled for uh, February ninth. Do we want it in person or Zoom?
I think in person, if everyone tells.
Okay.
And then we'll change it if we have to.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, then, you know, if I have to, when I post it.
So who's had it so far? Who's had COVID so far?
Doesn't matter, you can get it again.
Ah, you're not gonna
I'm going, I was exposed and I'm traveling to Orlando Sun, no, a week from Sunday, so.
Hey, you won't get it.
Good luck.
You and Tim have it, right?
Yeah, yeah, we were coming home from Kentucky and got a phone call from Neil who had stayed home. And uh, he said, I hate to tell you, but I've got um, COVID. And so he tested positive, and then we came home to that, and then a couple days later, four days later, we both had it. And, and, and back in Kentucky, and, and the baby and her husband all had it.
Oh.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it's been crazy, but, and Colleen Curis, you, you had it, anybody else?
I haven't.
Oh, you have it? You got it?
Say it again, Pam, you have it?
I have not had it.
Oh, good, good.
Okay, good. If you get the Omicron variant, which seems to be what everyone is getting, then you're protected against the Delta. But if you had the Delta, you're not protected against the Omicron, suppose. This is what the newest latest is, so, who knows?
But every day that changes, you know, it's like, you know, something else. Yeah.
Crazy.
All right, anybody else have anything else? No? All right, damn, where's Tim? Tim? Timothy?
Uh, Dave, could I just ask you, could you check the books out to me that are there for me, and I'll pick them up Saturday?
Yeah.
I'm afraid the deadline will run out for them.
Yeah, sure thing.
Okay, great, thank you.
You don't want to get a late note like me? Every time I, I'm gonna continue going and get a book from Free Books and, yeah. Every time I take one out, it's late.
Oh, Tim, how, 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 speaking of taking out books, how is the new delivery coming on Mondays and Wednesdays now, or how's that working?
If they're, if they're coming, the weather impacted them and the cold impacted them. Uh, but the, I mean, it's so new that I can't say it's working great, but it's so far so good.
Well, it's nice not to get the phone call on Friday, so that
Yeah, I bet.
Between Lynn and Ivy.
Colleen? I just, I want to, yeah, Colleen Curis, um, I just wanted to let you know, the reason why I wasn't getting any of your emails, um, like I didn't get the link and I didn't get the um, agenda and all that kind of stuff, it was all going into my spam. It seems like anything from AOL is going into my spam, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
I don't know what's going on with that, but.
Okay, because you said to send it in Gmail, which I did.
Yeah, and it was in my spam.
Okay.
I don't know why.
All right, we, we just have to get Tim, I don't know where he went. Oh, we got it, because we have to end the
Boomy?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're, we're done.
You guys adjourned?
Yes.
Oh, all right. I thought, I thought you have to vote to adjourn.
Oh, well, I'll
Oh, yeah.
That's, sorry, that's what I was waiting for.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, Tim, we're all set.